Our applicants are here. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this topic regarding the taxi cab application? Yes, please go up to the podium.
I've been here before and it's probably gonna be no different. Leon. It's kinda tough to get a cab. I don't know if anyone, ever been to a city where it's busy time, but you know normally if you'd call during any other time, we're there usually within about fifteen minutes. You know, the only thing about keep adding cab license, you know, which we've added lots of them over the time is it just makes my drivers get less calls at night and then they don't wanna drive and then it's harder for me to get drivers and the other cab companies too have the same issue. And the other thing I bring up is the shared ride taxi. I know I talked to Devin about this shared ride taxi. There's state and federal funds that the city could get, a lot of money to bring the fares drastically lower for the cab here. And you know, it's something that we should maybe look into is the shared ride taxi, which you know, the state, I know the state, I was talking to a gentleman in the state and he said that, you know, I talked to Devin, I think it was earlier in the year, and it might be too late because it'd be the next biennium, which would start in 2012 when the funds could be available to the city of Hudson to, you know, maybe that could address some. I don't know if you've ever addressed the 2:30 bar close, you know, it's kind of a tough time, no matter where you are and when you want a cab, you know, usually at 2:00, 2:30 is a tough time to get a cab. And you know, right now, the drivers might only get three or four calls at that time. We had more cabs on there, they're only gonna get a couple calls, one or two calls at bar close and that's usually the busiest time, Friday and Saturdays are the busiest times of the week. That's truly why we only have, well, we have twice as many vehicles that we really need as just for them to, you know, six hours a week at them two times.
Okay, do you have any other comments in particular in relation to this application?
Uh, no other than that. I don't.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else?
Move to close the hearing.
I'm sorry, there's one more person who, in regard to the taxi cab application, okay. There's a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Any other comments? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the public hearing is closed. This time I will turn the meeting over to Mayor Knutson.
Apologize for being late. Okay, let's call to order our regular meeting of the common council for November eighth. It's seven o'clock and would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, considering what the courage stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Yaku.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Burchell.
Okay, at this time we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here who'd like to address the council tonight, come forward to the podium and you can speak about any item that's not on tonight's agenda or that might come before the council at a future meeting or have an impact on the city of Hudson.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Jorgensen with Hudson area Chamber Commerce and Tourism Bureau and I'm here tonight to invite you all to join us to the holiday kickoff event of the Hudson community. It's our Christmas tour of homes and craft sale coming up November nineteenth through the twenty-first and I'd encourage you all to come out if you have the opportunity. We'll be hosting our traditional tour on that Saturday and Sunday from ten to five on Saturday and twelve to four on Sunday. And included in that traditional tour is the craft sale and marketplace up at the Best Western Inn and it also will be taking place with additional entertainment by our own Hudson middle school orchestra. Tickets are available now for eighteen dollars. And new this year that we'd like everyone in the community to be aware of is we have added an evening dazzle tour, which gives you an opportunity to visit our homes on the tour during the evening hours when the homes all sparkle and glow. And it also includes a stop at the Octagon House with an additional concert by the Hudson High School Orchestra. And included in that, or in addition to that, if you'd like to continue the holiday festivities into the evening, you're welcome to join us at the Black Tie event following. If you have any further questions, we encourage you to call us at the Hudson Chamber or visit our website. But it's, it's the kickoff to the season and shortly thereafter, we'll be looking at our celebrate the holidays events that are coming up soon. And I encourage everyone in the community to come out and enjoy the celebrate events, starting with our light up night on the day after Thanksgiving. And also, we have the candlelight stroll and reindeer in the park where Santa comes and we encourage families to come out and join us. And I have to make an amendment, it's not the chambers event, it is a separate celebrate the holidays committee that puts these events on, but we encourage you to come out and join us and celebrate the holidays in Hudson. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, was there anyone else? Yes, sir.
No, thank you very much for allowing me to come up and speak tonight. I'm here to talk about a program that the Hudson Police Department is working in conjunction with youth court, St. Croix Valley Youth Court, North Hudson Police Department, SAD, and the St. Croix Valley Insurance Corporation or Services, and that is a campaign by CARE eleven called the Great Hang Up. Basically what this program is, is we're trying to get people to pledge that they're not gonna talk or text while driving. We think this is a great opportunity, especially for our youth, to get out and say, you know what, there's enough distracted drivers on the road, let's not be talking and texting while we're driving. I have two members of the youth court here that are handing out these stickers to you and the pledge form itself. We had a kickoff campaign a couple weeks ago on a Thursday at a football game, we had over one hundred students that came forward and signed the pledge so that they would not talk or text. It's been an outstanding program. In fact, two of the gals here from youth court wanna come up and explain the program to you, so if you would indulge them for a couple minutes, we'd like to present this program.
Hello, I'm Callie Alene, I'm a member of the youth court. They're going to pass a law that all drivers are banned from texting and driving on November first of two thousand and ten. You can take the pledge by December fir-, if you take the pledge by December first and enter a CARE eleven prize package and you could win the prize package or other great items.
And I'm Brooke Barocoff from the St. Croix Valley Youth Court and youth court has partnered with CARE eleven, St. Croix Valley Youth Court, Youth Action Hudson, Students Against Destructive Decisions, the Hudson Police Department, and the North Hudson Police Department, and St. Croix Valley Insurance to put this campaign on. And I have our pledge form that everyone signs when they take it and we put it in a box and that's how they get entered to be in the drawing. And we also give them this window decal which has the pledge on it, so when they're driving and they get the urge to talk or text, it reminds them of the pledge that they took, so they don't. And we also have this little money mailer that has the drive now, talk text later poster on it and also information about our second annual Hudson Holiday Boutique.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You want us to sign these so you can collect them and put them back?
Okay, anyone else? All right, now the consent agenda.
To approve the regular enclosed session minutes of October eighteenth, two thousand and ten, to approve extinguishing the five foot wide utility and drainage easements on both sides of the common lot line between lots twenty-nine and thirty heritage greens, except for the ten foot wide easement area that is abutting the front and rear lot lines, to approve extinguishing the utility easement along the south ten feet of Lot nine Hudson Industrial Park, except the east ten feet and west five feet, to approve claims for payment in the amount of seven hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office and on request, on request and is posted on the city's website, to establish an urban forestry board that would include the Public Works Committee and two citizens who would meet in conjunction with the Public Works Committee meetings, to place on file the semi-annual report of the Community Development Director and the Community Access Board minutes of October twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten. That is all.
Move for approval. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda items. Roll call vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchell? Oh, he's absent. Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is from the Plan Commission amendments to the municipal code, chapter two oh two, signs. Mr. Dennis Darnold is here, the Plan Commission's worked on this over the course of the last several months, better part of a year, and Dennis, why don't you tell us about it?
Well, for the past almost a year, this Plan Commission basically initiated efforts on the sign code to address the electronic message boards and then that expanded into a comprehensive review and amendment, proposed amendment to the sign regulations. Most significant issues in regards to the proposed changes are the electronic message display regulations have been updated to address the technology that's available now. No signs will be permitted on public streets, except traffic regulatory signs now, we're talking about garage sale signs, open house signs, real estate signs. They would be allowed to be placed on private property with permission of a private property owner, but no longer allowed in the public street right of ways. That consideration comes from court actions that basically say if cities allow signs in right of ways, they allow all types of signs in right of ways, so we really have to make a decision, do we try to clean up the right of ways and leave our community in an aesthetic environment or do we allow all types of signs in right of ways and potentially becomes aesthetically cluttered from that standpoint. In the formatting, tried to change to neutral discussion as far as types of signs, so it's content neutral, we don't talk about garage sale signs, those types of things, but it's more off-premise, on-premise, that consideration. So those are the, and there's other considerations. The Plan Commission's recommending, the common council consider it, Kathy and I are recommending a public hearing and the Plan Commission's also recommending a public hearing to be conducted on this, so the public does have an opportunity to provide input to the common council before they consider adoption of the proposed regulations. Copies of the Plan Commission recommendations are forwarded to you. If council members have specific concerns or ideas, I'd like to hear from them, so before we put a public hearing notice, we can make some of the amendments to the draft ordinance. I'm suggesting that the public hearing, if you want to proceed in that, would be held December second, that would still give us time to potentially have a public hearing, adopt the ordinance, and get adopted for the end of the year. If we do not do that, then we will need to consider the extension of moratorium on the electronic message signs one more time. So with that, if there's any specific concerns or review that the council members have, I'd like, be pleased to discuss that with you tonight. Kathy's also, has worked on this, spent a lot of time on this the last three months.
Scott?
Yes, I have just some minor things, Danny. On illuminated signs, there is a sentence here that says, "All illuminated signs shall have a shielded light source." Would you define shielded for us here?
Well, essentially, you know, it's, really what we're looking for is having, if the illumin-, if the signs are illuminated from interior, then they have to, the lighting has to be covered. If the, if the light is coming from an exterior or outside source shining on and essentially the light cannot, should not be seen from the traffic consideration.
Okay.
So it's, so it doesn't become a visual burden to driver or pedestrian.
One housekeeping item mentioned here is that in the B-three Central Business District for freestanding signs, it says, "The maximum height shall be eighty square feet," I think we mean the maximum area.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so we'll just change that.
What page are you on there?
I'm on page thirteen, fourth line from the bottom, talking about the maximum area in the B-two General Business District, then the B-three Central, we should change height to area, I believe. And a question that the council may wish to take up under portable signs on page sixteen. I think it's a fair assumption that a portable sign is by definition there for a short period of time, or it's, it's not a temporary sign under our definition of temporary sign.
It could be picked up, put inside every night, put back out, I mean, that would be the general intent that now, to say that these signs couldn't be left out overnight, that's not really our, I mean, our intent is, is that they could be picked up, put out, put away, you know. Somebody not too long ago had a business in downtown Hudson and I said, "Well, you need to move your, anything that's portable inside during the evening hours," and he asked me why, and I said, "Well, it may end up through the front window of your business if you don't," and about two weeks later, something ended up through the front, the front windows. So I mean, in that case, you know, we want those signs to be put away.
Okay. That was my question, that, because-
I mean, that'd be more prevalent in the downtown area than perhaps on the hill, but-
No, I think you're absolutely right. It just does not say when they, if they should be removed at night or-
No, we did not specifically put that requirement in.
Okay.
But the ones you pull on a trailer still are not considered temporary, so they could be there permanently?
Well, there's no, there's, unless you have a sign, if you have a sign on trailer, it's on the parcel where that sign is referring to, if it's placed on premises, if it's placed off premises, it's an illegal sign. And then, you know, we did have a time, we did have a time period as discussed where a sign like that could be put out two or four hours, well, how do you determine that time period when it's first put out? So the Plan Commission decided, basically, there'd be no time limit if those signs are on trailers, put out on a public right of way or off-site, they're illegal unless they're on the site of the particular business that they're referring to.
But wouldn't it also be true that they don't fit the size restriction for a portable sign, which is four feet by three feet?
Yeah, most likely, yeah, most likely would not.
It'd be two feet nine inches by two, two feet nine inches if it were a square sign, or seven and a half feet.
So a trailer sign, if it was really small, could be there permanently?
No, again, I think the regulations doesn't specify size, it says if it's on a trailer, it's illegal.
Okay, if it's on public property.
Kathy can comment to it, but the intent is, is that if it's on a trailer, or it's on a vehicle for the specific purpose of being a sign, now, let's say, you know, Darnold Salvage is on the side of the pickup, I mean, that's, that, that's not intended to be advertising and, you know, we're not gonna address those issues, but if, if that same pickup has a sign in the back that says Darnold pickup with a, or Salvage with an arrow, you know, pointing one way, it's pretty evident that sign is, is for signage purposes only.
Yeah, it's an off-premise sign which the ordinance prohibits.
Right.
Except in very limited circumstances, temporary, special event type.
So the recommendation from the Plan Commission is that we felt there should be a public hearing. We talked about whether the Plan Commission should hold a public hearing themselves and decided it would probably be better to send the ordinance here and let the council have it. So as the subcommittee that it was sent to was the Plan Commission, we feel like we've done the work there that we intend to do. Tonight, you could choose to have a first reading if you wanted to. You could choose to not have a first reading, but instead, schedule the public hearing for the first Monday in December is what Danny's suggesting, which is December sixth.
I believe so, yes.
December sixth. And at that time after the hearing, you could have both first and second readings if you wanted to, or however you wanna do it. If there are changes that you have to it that you wanna suggest right now, it might be good public process for us to consider amending this right now as you desire so that the public has a chance to read those changes and, and respond to them in the hearing, rather than holding your comments, if you've already got them, holding your comments until after the public has already sort of expended their chance to comment on it. So for those of you, I know there are several that have followed this quite closely, one of the things that we had some discussion on was on the electronic message display signs, the interval required for how fast it changes, to get away from the blinking, where you, you know, now we have some that are changing under a second. So you get somewhere around, you know, sixty to eighty changes in a minute. And in here, we've got, what is it?
Four seconds.
Four seconds. We talked about eight. We settled on four. And that's just an example, so there, there are many areas in here that you may have some input in, I don't know if you've had a chance to study it thoroughly, but otherwise, the suggestion was just go ahead and schedule a, a meeting. The, the hearing is not required for this type of an ordinance change, but this is a pretty extensive change to-
Yeah.
-an area of regulation that affects lots and lots of people, from homeowners having a garage sale to every business in town. I think it's a good place to have a public hearing.
I will so move if, unless other council members have other alterations.
I think Lori and I are, I think there's some, just two minor changes in the residential areas. I think our intent was, you know, to allow residential properties to have non-commercial speech, but part of the signage that's been going up is roofing contractor signage, so forth, but, you know, typically, we allow that signage out during the period that the roof, roofing company or some of their contractors on site and supposedly take the signs off. What they've been doing is leaving them there and then they become advertising signs. So I, Kathy and I need to clarify that language in the ordinance. And then, secondly, is home occupation signs, we're gonna allow those to be on the yard or where they have to be attached to the house. And those would have some kind of potential commercial speech involved, where we actually do allow commercial, limited commercial uses within households, as long as it doesn't negatively affect the residential area. So I think those two areas, I think maybe need to be cleared up a little bit, so.
Okay. Scott, you had a motion?
I had a motion for the first, set, set the date for the first hearing for December sixth.
Second. Second.
Are we still open for?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so the issue of home businesses and signs in yards, it's, I think it's in light of the economy, we're seeing a lot more of that going on and I didn't see where it was addressed in here and I think we need to. And then the other thing is section two oh two dash seven, B fifteen, it's on page twenty-one, right in the middle of the page, if I understand this correctly. So there's an event going on at church and individuals can have those signs on their private property, correct? But only two hours?
Off-premise, special event signs? Yeah, on the private property.
Right, so I can only put that up two hours before the event? Even though it's-
Yeah. The idea is, it is supposed to be temporary and strictly limited to around the time of the event. It's not supposed to be for weeks before, that was the understanding, I think.
Yeah, I see where Lori's coming, you have two kinds of specific, like garage sale signs, you know, two hours might be acceptable, something like a church social, you may wanna, I mean, but I, yeah.
Well, we're getting into the type of content, because then you'll have the real estate signs and then you'll have another, a grand opening sign and that's the difficulty in-
I'm just trying to understand it, it's pretty, pretty limiting.
On private property, you still have the real estate sign, we're not following what you're saying there.
Well, the temporary, open house type signs.
Right.
If, it's hard to make different rules for different types of events, speci-, especially when there're types of, certain types of institutions or businesses, you're allowing to put up signs, church sale, whereas you probably wouldn't do that for a commercial sale and then you're preferring certain types of speakers over other speakers and can't do that.
Without, you know, tearing this all apart, and I, I don't mean to do that, but I would just like to see that amended to a different number of hours. So what you're saying is if we're having an open house, I can't put a sign out in my yard until two hours before the open house. Can't say, I can't put it on Friday and say, "Open house on Saturday."
Wait a second, that's on premise, that's your own-
Okay, yep, you're right.
So that's different.
The church could have a sign on their own property, right?
Correct.
For how long?
I don't, let's see, no, let's look at it, it's temporary.
A week, one week before the event.
Yeah.
Aren't you, aren't we restricting, and I don't wanna, like, I don't wanna cut into it, all that either, but aren't you cutting in, like, the church bazaar, they wanna, they have it for, up for three weeks so they, people plan around and they make more money for that weekend?
Well, you know, we certainly understand that, Randy, Kathy's trying to say, you know, we gotta write this ordinance so it's content neutral and that, that makes it tough to do those-
Yeah, right.
...types of considerations, but all of a sudden, you're considering the content to the sign and how, and that, and that was, that was the most difficult thing, I believe, for the Plan Commission to try to address, was that particular issue, so I, I said all along, if we take signs out of the right of ways, you're gonna have people coming down screaming that, you know, you can't have a garage sale sign out. And you can have it, but it's gotta be on private property now, so, I mean, there's been some consequence to having to consider this very comprehensive-
Well, okay, now, let me, let me direct you a little bit here. I don't think there's anything wrong with scheduling the hearing and we've got this noticed on our agenda, so you can do whatever you want with it tonight. Why don't we stick to the motion at hand for now and then if one of you wants to make a second motion to amend this, let's do that separately. So what's on the table is setting the hearing for December sixth. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, Lori, you brought up a point about the home occupation businesses on page eleven, two oh two dash six, A three. In, in R-one and R-two residential districts, "One on-premise sign is allowed on property used for non-residential uses legally allowed or permitted in the R-one or R-two." Now, what that means is that if you've got a permit to be doing that business, then you also get to have the one sign of this limited size and it's one per lot frontage, correct, Danny? Now, not everyone doing a business in their home in the city has a permit to be doing the business in the home. And this might bring up a little bit of that issue, I mean, if what you're getting at is we haven't been enforcing this, no, we haven't really been enforcing this.
I'm just, you've seen more of it and I'm, I just wanna get it clarified.
Well, I, for the most part, the reason we require a home occupation permit, just so we know that they are in the homes, that's, we don't require a fee to be paid, you know, we do require that they contact the neighbors so the neighbors know what's going on, but you know, certainly, we're not just trying to discourage small businesses in homes that don't have an impact on the residential areas, so to try to accommodate those within reasonable signage.
But you're saying that those businesses that don't have that permit?
Well, I mean-
The chainsaw guy that sharpens blades.
Yeah, we go up and talk to them and say, "Listen, you know, come here and get your permit."
At no cost to them.
At no cost.
And it allows them to have the one sign in there.
Well, they can be turned down if the neighbors don't, if the neighbors won't support it.
Oh, yeah, it's the type of business that would create a problem for the neighborhood, so.
There's criteria under the zoning ordinance for issuing a home occupation.
Okay, then, the sec-, the, the comments about the temporary off-premise signs, we spent a lot- a lot of time talking about that at the plan commission, and, you know, I think Denny makes the point very well. The idea here is to be content neutral. So Randy, if you want the church to be able to advertise their pancake breakfast or bazaar for three weeks, then every garage sale will be able to be three weeks, and so on, every real estate open house. And since real estate open houses tend to happen almost every week, then you're going to have, those signs can essentially be up forever.
Wouldn't we be restricting free enterprise?
Well, this is, this is the place. So what we did is we tried to follow what's been done elsewhere. For example, the county redid their ordinance and paid some experts to come and help them make it constitutionally acceptable. City of New Richmond has redone theirs like this.
And is that what this is, or are we restricting free enterprise?
Well, you can set the two-hour limit to whatever you want to, but I'm just saying, if you go from two hours to three weeks, that's a big jump.
And it's, it's less temporary.
You're going to cut into the profits of these businesses or organizations. And that's not what I'm, I'm willing, I don't want to play with that. We need to find a tool, or, I know you guys have worked hard on this, but we've got to find a way that works for them.
Well, I think what the plan commission was looking at in the temporary sign is the visual clutter, which is not attractive, and just in the right-of-way, it's a public safety issue. So that, and when you're in a situation where you have to open it wide, open it up wide and allow all signs, you're just going to have the whole right-of-way full of signs. So you try to tailor it to what signs, you just try to impose some sort of reasonable regulation on it to achieve those ends.
I think what Randy's point is, is there's something other than two hours before the event, is one day, two days more acceptable, and still be within the realm of trying to control the signage.
Yeah, that, that is, I mean, that's.
I believe that's what Randy was asking.
It is, but I'm also, you know, you've got churches that rely on a fundraiser, let's say, for example, and they have their signs up for two months, on a banner outside on their yard, and that's money.
We're talking off-premises.
Well, I am talking about whatever, the whole, I understand that.
Yeah. So, I mean, if it's on their premises, it's a different situation.
But it does go off. There's a craft sale going on, I think, now, right now, and right of way. Or, there was, you know? These organizations are counting on that for their advertising. I guess we just need to get a, I don't know the answer.
Well, I mean, they're allowed to have so many special events. I mean, churches can apply for the special event, they can have up three a year, maybe we need to expand that by one more per year or something, but.
Yeah, you can play with it, I mean, adjust the time periods, but the longer it is, the less temporary it is, and you've kind of defeated your purpose in terms of eliminating the clutter and the public safety distractions in the right-of-way.
Does anyone have a motion?
There's, one other thing I wanted to say. I would, I would like to see a strike section E.
What page?
These are campaign signs. I mean, take campaign signs, treat them just like, um.
What page?
Uh, I'm looking at page eight. Treat them just like garage sale signs. So, I mean.
What, what's, well, you have to understand that under the law and under our constitution, political speech is the most highly protected
Sure.
speech. And especially during an election campaign period, you just cannot really regulate political speech.
No, it's not political speech, it's just a question of, you know, if we're talking about clutter, that certainly is a lot of clutter.
Well, but what I'm telling you is, it's very difficult to regulate political speech because it's highly protected under the constitution.
All right, well, I just, you know, if we're going to, talking about temporary signs, treat them all the same way.
It's just in a category on its own. I mean, it's about the most protected speech there is under the constitution.
And then that section on the campaign signs, isn't that basically state law that you're citing?
Well, what we have is a provision E, is suspension of the size requirements during the election campaign period. I think you just have to have that in there.
All right, I just thought I'd bring it up, because it is about clutter.
It's a complicated area, Lee, the, there are Supreme Court rulings, but also there are federal district court rulings. We're in a different district than Minnesota. Minnesota, for example, has a statewide rule that you can't put up a campaign sign before a certain day, and all the candidates follow that, and then on that day, the signs can go up. The reason they still have that, and we don't have that, is we're in a different district. And in the Wisconsin district, Illinois, Indiana, and so on, that whole concept was struck down. And so the state DOT, for example, has suspended their enforcement of signs along the highways because it's, it's not allowed. So you've got US Supreme Court rulings, but there are also these district court rulings that essentially create law. Maybe I'm saying that wrong, Catherine, but it creates a.
No, that would be applicable within our area. We're in the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals.
So within the Seventh Circuit, we are more highly regulated in what we could do to regulate them. We are more impeded by those rulings, which have said essentially, the First Amendment was specifically about political speech.
I guess I was thinking about it from a different aspect. I was thinking about, we are significantly, as Randy pointed out, reducing the ability to have a garage sale and do some of these other things, yet we're giving ourselves the okay to put up as many signs as we want when we're campaigning. But if we can't change it, we can't change it.
No, you really can't, and it's not just, it's anyone who's running for some sort of elected office, so it's really, or not even just that, just any kind of political speech. So it's not just about.
The flip side to that is that, while we've had an ordinance that requires political signs to be on private property.
Yes, and they have to come down.
Our ordinance has allowed real estate signs to be on the right-of-way, and that is an unconstitutional content-based discrimination, which were, anyone to press the issue, they'd be able to come in and say, "Look, we have the right to put any political sign we want on public property, because you're allowing real estate signs to do that."
And now we're not.
Now we're not.
Right.
Well, you know, I'd like to think that we've got the hearing set, so I've, this is first I've seen a good draft of this, so take it, go through it and bring it back.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
No.
Patiently waiting. Well, I, I called Denny earlier because I questioned one thing, and told him that I thought they've done a great job, and I was at a few meetings and been trying to keep track of everything going on. But the one, one thing I noticed is that, and I, the answer is probably freedom of speech, and I get that, I just wanted to bring it up, is that we have a limited timeframe on garage sale signs, advertisements for everything that we're talking about, we all have, we have timeframes on, but non-commercial signs on private property can be up all the time, for months and months. And not advertising someone's business, maybe advertising a public service, there's one on stage line, for example. It just sits up right on stage line, and I personally think they're a nuisance.
Well, it's on someone's own property.
I understand it's freedom of speech, but it's, and it's on private property, but we're, you know, I feel like we're having all these limits on everything else.
The limits really are on the temporary, I mean, the other on-premise advertising, permanent signs, there's size and so forth restrictions, but the limits that you're talking about really are on the temporary signs, and it was an effort to try to clean up the right-of-ways and make it enforceable, and make them temporary. So, a sign when someone, you know, stopped the war, or whatever it is, if that's on their own property, that's, no, that's, that's really not regulated.
I think they want to consider it as non-commercial speech. Commercial speech can be more highly regulated than non-commercial speech, and that's an important element to, to your freedom of speech considerations, that's.
What they were finding is commercial, in the case law, commercial speech was given greater protection. So to try to eliminate that in the ordinance, you can substitute anywhere, you can have a commercial sign, you can have a non-commercial sign, so that we're not favoring either commercial speech or non-commercial speech, we're trying to treat them the same.
I understand, I just had, I felt the need to say it.
It's complicated, yeah, and I don't blame you, it's a lot, it's a very difficult area of regulation, to be honest, because there's just absolutely no guarantees in terms of enforceability.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
In regard to the temporary off-premise special event signs on page 21, item B5, says, "Signs shall be placed no sooner than two hours before the special event begins and be removed within four hours after the special event ends." I would move that we change that to no sooner than 48 hours before the special event begins, and stick with the four hours after. So these are signs on private property.
Yep.
Advertising an event. A sign that goes up two hours before an event is virtually useless.
Yeah, even 48 hours.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll be quiet.
All right. But I was thinking in the same, in the same lines, but I was thinking, usually when you're doing, even the pancake breakfast for the, for the fire department, you put it up one week ahead of time. Forty, you know, 48 hours isn't going to get people to buy pancakes.
But that's an on-premise sign.
Yeah.
It's also the one that hangers.
Yeah, but that's a city banner, that's a good.
It's a city banner, it's completely.
Well, the point is, they're not the only organization that wants to do pancake breakfast, and they shouldn't be the only organization that's given one week to, to invite people to a pancake breakfast.
Let them get their own government.
Oh, jeez.
So I would support your motion, but I think it should be a week, not 48 hours.
Again, I, just my opinion, I think we should take this home for homework and go through it. I'm not, guess, prepared to say 48 yes or 48 no.
As I was saying, I think, really in fairness to the public, to be able to know what it'll be, so that they've got a few weeks to think about it, talk about it, and then come and let you know what they think about what you think. If you really want to extend this, we ought to lay it out there now and, and let, let that circulate, rather than the two hours.
I might just add, this has been going on since March. We've all had a chance to follow the discussions, and we've had this draft since Friday.
Well, you know, so what?
Okay.
I'll move the question, I think we kind of exhausted the discussion.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passed four to one. Any other changes to this you'd like to make?
I'm going to make a motion for a week.
You made a motion for a week?
I mean, I think we should consider a lot of these events as we do with our own. I'd like to make a motion, we'd make it one week, not 48 hours.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Is there a second? No second. Motion dies, lack of a second. Any other? Okay, let's move on. Thanks, Denny. Finance Committee, applications for operators licenses, it looks like there's one that's added since the plan commission, or I recognize the name, but I didn't see there before.
I'd like to recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Did you say you'd like to be recused?
Yes.
Okay. So, staff recommends approval of all of these, there's one more that's been added since finance, I think it's John Dahl. And so that one, there isn't a committee recommendation on, but the others were all recommended to be approved by committee, and they've all been recommended for approval by staff.
Move for approval.
Second. This motion is second to approve the applications for operators licenses for the period November 9th this year to June 30th, 2012. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the applications are approved. Consider an application of Universal Transportation Services LLC for taxi cab service license, doing business as Ninja Cab Company, and two taxi cab driver licenses. The finance committee did consider this. There were questions there about where the, where the location of the business would be. The application states that it's located at the same location as Agave Kitchen. At the public hearing tonight, there were some questions about, or comments made about the multiple taxi companies. Any discussion?
The only thing I brought up at finance that I was curious about is the address of Agave Kitchen, the address of the office? I mean, is there actually going to be a business there, or is it just a convenient address? I mean, if we do run, the reason I ask is, as we brought up early about in-home businesses, they have to be certified to run out of a certain location.
I can answer that.
Yeah, Paul, why don't you come up here?
All right.
And introduce yourself.
Dominic Paul Rhodey, owner of Agave Kitchen, 501 Second Street, downtown Hudson. The reason I use that as an address is just because it's easy, you know? All the mail goes there, that's the only reason.
Right, and you're running the business right out of that?
Yep.
As, in conjunction.
It's two separate LLCs.
Yeah.
Everything's separate, even separate banks, but, so.
Okay.
Just easy, convenient.
That's what I wanted to know, is how it was associated with Agave?
Yeah, that's, that's, same owner.
Thank you.
Steve Markin was bored and kind of wanted to get in another project, it seemed like, so we did this.
I'll move for approval contingent on receipt of the certificate of assurance.
Second.
This motion is second to approve the application. I take it that's for the taxi cab drivers licenses and for the taxi cab license?
Correct.
And we did get the certificate of insurance.
Okay, so without any contingencies, then?
So these other contingencies have been proven.
And the bills have been paid, too. The utility bills were paid today, and the certificate of insurance was received today.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the licenses. Any discussion?
I'd like to bring up the philosophical point, which other people may or may not agree on, but a cab service, I believe, should try to service the entire community, so that when you don't have your own transportation, you can pretty much count on that somebody will show up at your door. And as we've heard earlier during the hearing, the bars and restaurants kind of grow their own trade as far as the taxi service goes. They're creating people who may get into a condition where they should take a cab, and that's good. And they may be then, the bars and restaurants may be in a position to take all the cream out of this business, starving other cab companies, who then are not available for that person out in some residential area who needs a taxi cab in the middle of the night. So I just want to open that up for discussion, if anybody has any feeling on that at all.
I'm confused, why would the other cabs not be able to service to other parts of the city?
When you are creating people in your establishment, sometimes in a condition where it's advisable for them to take a cab, if you're taking a cab and you're providing a cab.
Right.
It means you're not calling any of the other cab companies.
But all the people.
We're talking, well, we're talking about a cab, unless I missed something here, we're talking about a cab service, this is a separate service that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, right?
But as we have heard, the vast majority of the business is on Friday and Saturday nights. It's just a question I want you to consider, if you don't care to consider it, don't.
Any other discussion?
I, I think that your, your question would be, would be correct if this cab service only ran from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. I think that would be absolutely true.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a good point.
Well, and the, the other comment I would have to that is that essentially, the applicant is the LLC, which is a separate entity.
Oh, I understand.
That might be splitting hairs, but it is the case.
Operating out of a bar restaurant.
Yes, it's true, but.
Could I move the previous question? Is that the new rule we're using by?
We've been through that a few times, I mean, technically, there is supposed to be a vote to close the discussion.
However you want to do it, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close debate on this.
I'll second that one.
All right. All in favor of closing discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Licenses are approved. Let's move on to number five, review third quarter room tax revenues and consider an amount to be recommended for the 2011 room tax grant program.
There was a question at the finance committee where we were on at collections through November, or September thirtieth, that was about a hundred, just over a hundred and five thousand, which is about eighteen hundred dollars below last year.
Okay, so when we last talked about this, we were recognizing that revenues were down from what had been budgeted for 2010 and what had been collected for 2010, but we had heard that other communities were seeing improved receipts during the third quarter. And so the action by the council was to postpone the item until the third quarter revenue report was in. It is now in, it was better than third quarter last year. However, we're still down by a few thousand dollars in 2010 versus where we were at the same time in 2009. And so Devon's original recommendation was that we should lower the projected room tax revenue for 2011, down by five thousand dollars from the one forty we used this year, down to one thirty-five for next year. That still seems like a sound recommendation. At the finance committee, there was action and a vote to change the allocations for the disbursements under this program. I had given you a kind of a straw man at a previous meeting. Instead of that, what was recommended by the finance committee was a ten percent across-the-board cut for all the category, all of the line items under city tourism and beautification. With the exception of, wait a minute.
It was ten percent across the board.
Fireworks, am I on the right sheet here? Doesn't look like fireworks is.
No.
I've got the wrong sheet, I got the wrong sheet in front of you, okay. Very well. Ten percent cut, and what that made was that category totaled thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty. And then for the grant program, which we had set up last year to run from zero to ten percent of the projected room tax revenue, and that will end up being just over three pers, around three percent this year would be four thousand and fifty dollars. That was the recommendation from the finance committee.
So you are not funding the PIPs or the Hot Air Fair? Is that what that, you're recommending from finance?
No.
No. The four thousand and fifty is just what is going to be given to the grant committee.
Last.
Thousand and ten is what was actually.
Last year eighty-five hundred dollars was distributed through grants, and the grant awardees were chosen based on recommendations from a separate committee that we appointed that included community members. They met a couple of times, considered the applications, and made recommendation to the council. The plan would be to do that same thing over the next couple of months. But before we do that, it would be to set a dollar amount. So this is the recommendation that came from finances, to set the dollar amount at four thousand and fifty dollars. And then that committee would, would meet and would determine, or would, wouldn't, would make recommendations on who would receive those grants.
I'll move the recommendation from finance.
All right, there's a motion and a second to move the committee's recommendation. Is there any discussion?
What came to finance was a different plan, and I'm the sole one who voted unopposed to a ten percent cut across the board, because I think that we, the way the mayor had laid it out was, there were a lot of good points to it, the, the original, and I, I don't think anybody has that original list. Oh, is on the other side of that one?
No, this is from the Saturday meeting.
The, um, in that one, he actually had cut back the concert series a little bit more. He'd cut back flower banners and flower baskets and reallocated some of those monies. As I made the comment in the finance committee meeting, on this list of things, the Historical Society, their sole purpose is tourism. And I'm sure that, as we heard from the Chamber of Commerce this morning, they work together in, in supporting the city and supporting tourism. So I, I feel strongly that, you know, the Historical Society shouldn't be cut. I believe that they are a key, and they're, they're one of the biggest things on here for tourism. As we went down through the original list, I believe that the, here we've got the fireworks cut, cut back by, cut back by a grand, but again, the people come to the city for this. I think that we had done a good job of laying things out, and I would propose that a ten percent across-the-board cut cuts too deeply into the fireworks, and it doesn't address some of the issues that the mayor had recommended in things that we could cut back and control, such as holiday lighting, which actually turned out to be the same number anyhow. Banners and flower baskets, we can make some arrangements there, we can do some things with the, with our own parks and public works to get what we need to get done there. But by funding those more, we're cutting back on the octagon house, we're pulling money out of the cemetery, and the senior citizens, and the VFW, and the Miss Hudson. I don't think this is the right approach.
What was the vote on this coming out of committee?
Well, there were only, of our four members, Mr. Burchell was not able to attend, so there were only the three of us, so it passed on a two to one vote with council president and myself voting in favor of the motion, Lee voting against.
Can I explain part of my rationale for the cut is, hopefully it's temporary, and hopefully in a year or two, when tourism picks back up, they could be restored. I think it's difficult, and I appreciate the, that the octagon house has a unique function, but I think it's difficult to say they draw more tourists to the city than our concerts do, than our, than our fireworks does. You know, I, that's why I, I think a uniform cut makes more sense. And that way we're not picking winners and losers and placing value on, on one area over another. So that was my thinking.
Laurie, I, I appreciate that. I, I have to say that I would more likely side with Lee in this debate in that a ten percent cut across the board is, is not using the best of our thinking faculties, because the fact of the matter is that not everything's equal. Some things are more important than other things, and some things are more useful to our goal of attracting people to the city. And frankly, not just attracting them to come and drive over here across the river in the morning and watch something happen and then drive back that evening without ever spending a penny in Hudson. You know, we want them to bring their wallets with them and, and open them generously, we hope. So I would say that ten percent across the board is probably not the way to go. I think that there are some things that deserve more money than other things.
Which one of these causes people to come across the border and not spend money in Hudson?
Hot Air Fair.
I don't agree with that.
They come here in the morning, they watch the, everything take off, then they get their cars and go back home.
Hot Air Fair's not on here, on the list.
No, you asked me for, as an example.
No, I asked which one of these that we're talking about cutting.
Well, you didn't say that, but.
No, I said which one of these.
Okay.
Best city tour, I, I, I'm just saying.
When we looked at this, the, what came to, what came to finance was holiday lighting at four hu, forty, forty-five hundred dollars, which is what a ten percent cut was, so that was a one-for-one. Concert series at four thousand. It does mean a little more work for staff to come up with maybe support money to help fund that organization or find something that's a little less expensive. Banners at twenty-five hundred, flower baskets at twenty-five hundred, the Historical Society at three thousand, cemetery at three thousand, senior citizens at twenty-five hundred, VFW fully funded at a thousand, and Miss Hudson at twenty-five hundred. What I suggested in that plan is people who are looking for the grant program know that they have a chance of getting it and not getting it. Now, we've been talking about working this group over a period of time. They know that there is a very good chance that they may or may not get that money, and they have to compete for it. I would like to see, going back down through this list, that we go back and fully fund the fireworks at, at ten thousand. I like the mayor at forty-five hundred on the holiday lighting, four thousand on the concert series, twenty-five hundred on the banners, twenty-five hundred on the flower baskets, but I'd like to see the Historical Society at four thousand, cemetery at four thousand, senior citizens twenty-five hundred, VFW a thousand. Miss Hudson can be twenty-five hundred, and we still have, if my calculations are right, thirty-five hundred left over for the grant program. There's still money available for the grant. See, one, two, five, three thousand available for the grant program, sorry, my numbers are off there. Devon's, Devon's calculating here on the fly.
Anyone who hasn't been heard on the motion on the table, like to speak to the motion?
What is that motion, is that?
The motion was to accept the committee recommendation.
Where did ten percent come from?
Ten percent came from Laurie.
What, I guess what?
The committee recommendation.
Just a number?
It was a number that made it balance.
You know, this, I'm sorry.
And honestly, at the time, you wonder why I voted for it after I'd already made a recommendation. It was because I quipped. We'll talk about this for another half an hour at the council anyway, so let's just get on with it. And here we are. So I, I guess the way this works is you own the motion, Lee seems to be proposing an amendment. It would have to be okay with the two of you to amend it, otherwise we're going to vote on the motion. Am I right in that? Okay. Any more discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say one thing.
Sure.
I was at the finance committee meeting, and I listened to the entire discussion, and I, Lee, I think you had very valid points there. I just, I second in Laurie's motion because I agree with her, because I think it's the most clean-cut way to, to spread it around, spread the money as evenly as possible. So I, I do think you have good ideas, however, I think that keeping it clean-cut and fair across the board is not, I forgot the wording that you used, ill-minded or whatever. Whatever the wording you used.
I didn't use that phrase.
I don't remember the phrase you used anymore because I think I didn't want to, but.
It wasn't so clever.
Allow me then, Mary, to propose another idea for you that you might want to consider, which is, we have been very happy this past year with how our fireworks have turned out. Because for years, we had fireworks that were frankly kind of lackluster, pardon the pun. But people are kind of like, meh, you know, and everybody else had better fireworks. And we kind of shuffled some things around and cooked some deals, the mayor was very helpful with this, and we had great fireworks last year, and everybody was really turned on, and it cost us ten grand. Can we do that same show for nine grand, or are we going to go back to lackluster fireworks? Were everybody kind of saying, eh?
Well, I don't think nine grand is going to give us lackluster fireworks, I remember that same thing, lackluster fireworks. But I think we're fortunate to have nine grand to spend on fireworks, because some cities cut the entire fireworks budget, so.
I will point out that the three areas that are taking the biggest cuts here are owned and run by the city. Flower baskets, you know, holiday lighting, concert series, these are things that are our budget, so.
Lee, did you formally propose an amendment here? Was that what you were doing? Were you asking to amend their motion?
I can ask it as an amendment.
You accept the amendment?
No.
No. Any more discussion?
Let's just vote on the question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, motion fails. Two in favor, three opposed. Is there a new motion?
I move what I just laid out there.
Could you go through that again, please, on the numbers?
Yes, maybe Devon could read it back.
Fireworks, ten thousand, holiday lighting, forty-five hundred. Concert series, four thousand, banners, twenty-five hundred, flower baskets, twenty-five hundred. Octagon house, four thousand, cemetery, four thousand, senior citizens, twenty-five hundred, VFW, a thousand, Miss Hudson, twenty-five hundred, leaving three thousand for the grant program. Is that correctly?
Correct.
And does it add up to the forty thousand?
Second. I assume that was a motion.
That was a motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Yes, Mary?
I have a question, has anyone even checked to see if we can pan, can, if twenty-five hundred for banners and twenty-five hundred for flower baskets is going to work with the public works budget? Even the concert series comes out of, I believe, the public works budget, correct? Correct?
Correct.
So I, I know that, I talked, I had talked to Deb for a while on this, on the city and tourism, and on this entire budget, I had a couple of questions, and I believe she's saying the banners are kind of shit, you know, getting bad, and we're going to have to start replacing those and stuff. Are we going to be able to replace them, dropping the numbers down to twenty-five hundred? I mean.
For one year, yes, we'll get by. After that, you know, it may come from either the general tax levy, or it might be that our room tax revenue will go up, hopefully it will. And I think, as was stated before, hopefully this is temporary. We are beginning to see a turnaround, we're still projecting less for next year than this year. But we're hoping that's conservative, we're hoping that we're seeing the bottom in, in hotel stays and that that's going to start coming back.
The gap was closed a little bit the third quarter.
Okay, anyone else? Laurie?
I just want to comment, you know, this is four thousand dollars out of a nine million dollar budget we've been hemming and hawing over for better part of fifteen minutes, and, gosh. It's, I think it's micromanagement at its worst, and it's hopefully going to come to an end.
Anyone else? All in favor, yes?
Just roughly, what's the percentage? Did you do some math?
The percentage of this as opposed to our?
Thirty percent.
No, 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 what, his motion.
What, which percentage?
That was a ten percent cut, what roughly is?
Well, it varies because they're not, some are getting fully funded, some are getting cut.
Overall, we're, we're five thousand dollars down from last year. Or three thousand. So overall, are we, what percentage of the budget reduction overall is that? Three thousand over three hundred and? So overall, we're taking an eight percent reduction in funding.
I think the, the unspoken thing here, if I could just give you this, was at the time we set up this system with the grant application process in the separate committee, you might recall two of the groups that were here speaking on behalf of themselves and, and in, in opposition to that were the PIPs and the Hot Air Fair. Two groups that had been receiving fairly substantial annual appropriations from within this and were about, you know, they were about ready to have to apply for application, apply for grants and have no certainty of getting them. They did each get money last year, but the PIPs in particular got considerably less than what they had been getting. Under this new, what you're about ready to vote on, they're likely to see a considerable drop again. Now, both those groups have other means of funding themselves. And that's something, you know, for example, I brought up the point that the Hockey Association was getting five thousand dollars until a couple of years ago, and we weaned them off, and, you know, they have other means of funding themselves, and so you've probably heard very little in complaint from them. But just so you're aware, I mean, putting that down to what it'll be?
Three thousand.
Five thousand dollars. There's, there, there are several applicants who now will be vying for a much smaller pool of money.
And there may be more people this year applying for grants too.
Could be. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Do you vote yes?
Yes.
Four to one. Motion passed. Okay, so that was item number five. Item number six is to consider energy-saving program for streetlights and city buildings. This came from the Public Works Department, finance committee recommended approval. The B and B Electric to do energy efficiency upgrades, also to plan on the, accepting the Focus on Energy rebate in the amount of three hundred and eighty-one dollars, and to accept the bid submitted by B and B for fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The money to come from the seventy thousand dollars that we set aside back in 2009 for energy efficiency upgrades, we've used a little bit of that for some other projects, still have some left. This is a good example because the payback on this calculated out to be about seven or eight years. That's the kind of payback we're looking for. We've investigated lots of different energy-saving ideas, and essentially when they're fifteen years and over, I've been saying, go back to the drawing board and find something with a better payoff. But, you know, I think this is a good one.
I will move the committee recommendation to take the bid of B and B.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the committee recommendation, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Will say no. Motion passed. Then that takes us to review of proposed 2011 city budget. Can I report to you, there were a couple of items of good news in the last week. Devon, why don't you tell about that?
I did put a packet of information on your table with some pages to replace. There were changes. First one was our health insurance came in about four percent less than we had budgeted. Our associated financial group, who is our insurance advisor, negotiated with preferred one and got them to come down. So that saved some money. The other difference was our final statement of assessment came in higher than I had estimated, which provided for additional funds in the end. The pages that you've received tonight, I did not change, give you copies of every single department with the change to the health insurance, but this, everything is summarized there. What the Finance Committee recommended was that they reduced the estimate for interest by twenty-thousand dollars. Our interest rates simply are not going up, and I was a little concerned about what we had estimated, so they lowered that. They reduced the health insurance allocation. They increased the contingency account by a hundred and nine thousand, which will put it at a hundred and twenty-nine. In the original budget, we had reduced that to twenty-thousand dollars just to get the, keep the mill rate the way it was. But that puts us at risk if there's something that comes up during the year that we need funds for. And if we don't utilize it, then it will go back into the fund balance and start to restore that. Bottom line is, we were able to maintain the tax levy. It's about a hundred dollars less than it was last year, and it's a reduction of about two cents in the mill rate. The other good news, and I've done it thirteen times today because it just didn't seem possible, however, the overall mill rate with all the taxing districts will be down by two cents. And I think it has to do with the fact of how our equalized valuation changed in comparison, for example, to the school district with the other jurisdictions in the school district, and the county, and everybody else that we, we collect the taxes for. So I will continue to double-check those numbers, but as of right now, for the city taxpayers, it'll be a flat, assuming they did nothing on their property, so.
I have a question, Devon. In reading over the revenue figures, the expectations for next year, and it calls for revenues from property taxes, residential property taxes, to be down somewhat, which reflects that lower mill rate. But it also called for an increase of about two-hundred-thousand dollars from other tax revenues, and what are those?
From four-seventy-one to five-forty-four, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a fairly substantial increase, and why would we expect that next year? I mean, I hope it's true. I'm sure it's true. I just don't know where it's coming from.
There was an increase in, we get payment in lieu of taxes from the water utility.
Okay.
And that was up seventy thousand. We get payment of taxes from the sewer, that was up eight thousand. So that should've been seventy-three thousand increase there. We also get, are getting additional state aid for transportation.
Okay.
About sixty-five thousand that we, in past years, it's been flat or gone down. We got about four more thousand in the shared revenue. So that's, some of the additional revenue came in from both sources. And we also have additional building inspection fees that we're estimating for next year.
The state aid and transport, has St. Craig County joined the Chippewa Transportation Authority? I don't know if we have or not.
I don't know.
Because that, that puts us in a special case. Okay, never mind.
I'm not sure why the transportation aid funding went up. It's based on formula.
Formula there, and we, it's miles of road, I believe, and.
But it, it went up substantially, so, thank you.
That item is here for discussion.
Our plan is, the public hearing will be at SIPs forty-five on the twenty-second. There is a public viewing copy available at the front desk here. We actually have two copies, if anybody wants to come down and look at it in detail.
Do you need a motion to set that public hearing?
It's already done.
Done it already. The item is here for further discussion if you want any here tonight. Otherwise, the intent is to have a hearing and adopt the budget at the next, at the next meeting.
We said that at our last meeting.
Yep.
Do we wanna walk through the, what we decided Saturday for the allocation of the one-forty-four?
I did that.
Okay, I was just, you didn't talk about the twenty for, you know, the two different allocations of the twenty thousand, did you?
Briefly, but one was, we felt like we had, on the interest income, interest income is really not what it's been. I mean, interest rates are really down, and even though we'd been doing what we thought was a pretty conservative estimate, now that there's a little more wiggle room, we decided to further lower the estimated income from our investments that we make. As we collect taxes, we'll often invest large sums of money, and, you know, years back, you can remember Betty moving that money around in CDs here and there and coming up with a little extra interest income here and there, and pretty soon, there was an extra hundred thousand dollars in the budget. At this point, we're almost in the opposite game. Rates are so flat, and there doesn't seem to be any likely change to that, that we felt like really it's prudent to lower that revenue amount because that's more realistically what we're probably going to get. So that was twenty thousand of it.
The, the actual was a hundred and forty-nine, not a hundred and forty-four, when all is said and done.
Okay.
Hundred and nine of it was to increase the contingency, and the other twenty thousand was to lower the tax, actual tax levy to last year's number. That's where the other twenty thousand came in.
And that was a key discussion on Saturday, because if we apply that twenty grand, it just, it literally means we are, our operating budget's exactly the same. If your homeowner.
The budget's a little higher, but our revenue is higher, but the tax levy is exactly the same.
Each homeowner will play the same as they did last year. I think that was key to our discussion, and I think it's important for the public to know. We're working hard on that.
Any other discussion on that? Let's move on to number eight, which is to consider the distribution of library impact fees. Catherine has worked on this quite a bit, and I think maybe I'll just turn the floor over to you to explain it.
Sure. Everyone got my memo. If you recall, in the lease between the library and the city, the lease authorized using impact fees to pay for the alterations and renovations that the library did to its space. And those costs have come in, and so, under the impact fee law, we can use impact fees only to pay for capital costs to expand or improve the library as a result of or attributable to new development. So we go through and analyze the costs, the population growth over the ten years. We reviewed the public library, public facilities needs analysis, and it worked out nicely because that was a ten-year projection. It was done in two thousand and one, using two thousand population, and now we're in twenty-ten. And we used actual population figures rather than the estimates in the needs analysis because we had actual population figures. When we did that, we came up with, for the, for most of the costs, we came up with a twenty-one percent ratio that's attributable to new development. We discussed, with respect to the elevator, we felt, and the library felt, they proposed that that be a hundred percent attributable to new development. It's a unique situation. The need to move the library came at this time. This building required an elevator to provide the additional space to accommodate the new development. That was not something that was contemplated or dealt with in the needs analysis because it simply wasn't a factor. It was a unique condition of this building. And so what the library submitted, and I think you have it now, you'll see a letter dated November fifth from Roy Schober, the board president, and, you know, kind of explaining all this as well. The total costs they're submitting for reimbursement is three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-two-forty-three. There's the category one, which is the Exhibit A, which applies the twenty-one percent allocation. Category two is the elevator and applies the hundred percent allocation. The other calculation that, so we took that total, we subtracted the amount of the North Hudson impact fees because they also have collected impact fees, and those are available to pay a portion of these costs. And that all is shown on Exhibit A of the resolution. So the bottom line is, they sub, what they're requesting, or what the city is considering using the impact fees for is the total three-twenty-five-eight-thirty-six. That's their total capital costs, you know, eligible for impact fees minus the amount that may be payable by North Hudson. From that, so the total account for the City of Hudson impact fee account is this five-twenty-nine-two-nineteen. What's left then is about two-hundred-and-three thousand, and the city itself incurred capital costs in purchasing the building. So we added up those costs, the purchase price, legal fees, inspection fees, subtracted. You'll see that also on the Exhibit A to the resolution. Subtracted the sale proceeds of the seven-oh-one Second Street, divided that in half because they have roughly half the building, and then multiplied that number by the twenty-one percent attributable to new development. So basically, what's happening is the total city impact fees that have been collected over this ten-year period will be used up to pay the capital costs, a portion of the capital costs attributable to new development. There was a fair amount of time spent on this. We got a lot of costs. Some were not, we didn't feel were capital costs under the statute, and so we've, we've gone through it pretty carefully. At this point, we're recommending this allocation, and I think the next step for the, we also talked about whether, well, do we just suspend the impact fee ordinance? At this point, I think that both the city, there's gonna need to be some discussion probably amongst the participating municipalities, the library and the city, on whether to, you know, do a new needs analysis. Right now, the one we're working under really doesn't fit the current situation anymore. And so rather than actually suspend it, I think we need to look at it and decide, the council will need to decide how to proceed, and may need to have that discussion with the other member municipalities. But the issue right now is allocating and using this impact fee account to pay for these capital costs that were incurred.
Catherine, I have a question about this that, and it has nothing to do with using the fees.
Mm-hmm.
But the mechanics of, of the table, Exhibit A that we have before us, and Devon, you're CPA. Maybe you can help me out on this. The city owns the building, and the city is leasing almost half the space in the building to the library. How then does the city get to say, the library has to pay us almost a quarter of a million dollars because we, it costs us a lot to buy the building? You're the landlord, and you bought the building. When does the renter start paying capital costs without getting a warranty deed in return? I don't understand this.
Well, we have, I mean, we've got the lease option to purchase. I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, what I'm asking is.
I'll answer the question, if you'd like.
Well, yeah, how is the city assessing a renter for the cost of the building? Isn't that taken?
No, we're not assessing. City residents paid impact fees.
Right.
When property was developed. The city has incurred these costs to purchase this building for the library.
Okay. I think that's real thin ice.
It used general funds. No, well.
It wouldn't happen.
Yeah, it would not have happened if the city hadn't spent city funds to purchase the building.
I'm not against this, as I said at the beginning. It's just, I don't understand the mechanics of this. It, you know, whatever, I mean, look, if we don't use these impact fees, we're gonna lose them anyway. So I'm not arguing about the use of these impact fees. I just thought philosophically, this is very odd for the lesser to be charging the lessie for part of the cost of the building initially.
It's a good discussion to have, though, and I think you ask a good question. It's a valid question. But it's also a matter of perspective. Don't think about those impact fees as being the library's impact fees. They never were. We've made this point over and over and over again. They are the City of Hudson's fees. They were collected as a fee from homeowners and developers within the City of Hudson to be used only for the improvement of the library. No other purpose, but to be on behalf of the City of Hudson. Now, we have accomplished improvements of the library that are eligible to be funded by those fees. And in our lease, an option to purchase with the library, that the city entered with the library, in there, we specifically stated, explicitly wrote out that we agree that you can use the impact fees for your remodeling up to the amount allowed by state law. And we've done everything we can here to find every last dollar that is eligible under the state law and told them that. But once that was done, then it is right, and it's fair, and it's equitable for city residents to have the rest of that applied towards the purchase of the building, which we did do, you know? That part of the thing may go back for you to this idea of lease or, or rent. If you stop thinking about it as that and start thinking about it that it's utilities and janitorial and insurance, then this all makes sense. We bought a building, we're letting you use it, and you're helping.
I'm not the library.
All right, but you are on the library board. So in this room, you are the library board's representative. You are the liaison from the library board to the city council and vice versa. So maybe my word isn't perfect, but in all, I mean, you're asking questions on behalf of the library board, and I'm answering them back to you as a representative of the library board.
I understand that. I just wish I could've gotten some of these kinda deals going with my renters, but I'll let it go at that.
Well, they also can exercise that option to purchase at any time.
We, we understand that.
Within five years.
Yeah. Understood?
So there's two parts to it. I mean, the first part in the allocation formula is for the remodeling. And, and the second part, then, in the, you know, the, the lower box on the Exhibit A is for the portion to go towards purchase of the building. And the Finance Committee recommended approval of Resolution twenty-two-dash-ten.
Move to suspend the rules.
There's a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Rule call vote.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Okay, now you could consider adoption of Resolution twenty-two-dash-ten.
Move to adopt twenty-two-dash-ten.
There's a motion in a second to adopt Resolution twenty-two-dash-ten. Any discussion on the resolution?
I guess the only comment I'd make is that, you know, we are paying the library first, and the city's actually not claiming all that we could potentially claim from that impact fund, so. I think it's more than equitable.
The other part, and Catherine alluded to it, but I believe she's correct. The members of the Hudson area joint library, the representatives of the four municipalities, do need to get together again and revisit our joint library agreement. Couple of things have come to light. And one is, I think that instead of going to each individual municipality with budget requests, there ought to be some sort of a joint meeting and a joint presentation for that. That would streamline the process. That would be one change. And this is another. If we're going to continue collecting these fees, there should be some means of us getting credit within our partnership because as it is, we will have paid for the remodeling in a, in a way that our other partners definitely have not. And it's all for the good of the library, and we definitely got into it, knew what we were getting into. But we're, we're also not, at this point, seeing credit. Now, maybe our partners will still give us credit at a future point, but that's something to be negotiated, I think, and it probably is time to begin to have some of those discussions again. Any other comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion passed, and I recommended that this money go into a future facilities fund. I don't think that was really a formal part of the motion, but if you wished, you could still do that. It would be set aside in the fashion that we did after we got money from the TID district, and then that money was available for us when we wanted to buy a building or land. Can we do that?
Well, we could. We also, I will be coming to the next, one of the next meetings with the budget, the annual budget adjustment amendment. We could do as part of that, do whatever. whatever.
Let's do it right now. I will so move.
Second.
A motion in a second to put this into a future facilities fund.
Yeah.
Would that include facilities or parking areas?
Well, I mean, future councils will be able to do with that as they want, but it...
But we're not binding them.
It will be put into the fund balance as it is designated.
It makes it a little harder for it to get spent in the next six months on someone's pet project.
Right.
And the only reason I bring it up is because we did spend a lot out of the parking fund when we bought the parking lot, and that might be something, some improvement downtown in the future.
When it is sold, that, that money will go back into the parking fund.
There are worse things you could do with the parking fund than buy parking lots, which is what it is intended to do.
It was perfect. It was a perfect solution.
So the motion is...
There's anything else you can do with the parking.
It was perfect. And I was just thinking about additional work downtown.
Impact fees that we collect?
No.
No, this two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, nine...
Just wanted to clarify that.
Two hundred, what is it, two hundred and three?
Twenty-three, yep.
Would go into a...
Within the fund balance, it would be designated for future facilities.
Got it, got it.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Motion passed. All right. Update on projects?
Good evening, council.
Hello.
Congratulations, mayor. Not a lot here to report. Just wanted to point out that with the Wisconsin Street application for surface transportation funds, they've pushed that date. Now, they expect announcements to be mid to late December. Other than that, projects are wrapping up. I don't have a lot to report. Are there any questions for me this evening?
That was quick. Thanks for staying around for an hour and a half so that you could do that.
I'm curious about other parts of the agenda, so.
All right. Uh, let's see where we're at. Okay. Due to my recent election as representative to the State Assembly, I hereby submit my resignation as mayor of the City of Hudson, effective November twenty-ninth, two thousand ten. I've enjoyed working with the council. Second part to this, I am suggesting that you schedule a special council meeting for Monday, November twenty-ninth, at eight AM to consider filling a vacancy in the office of mayor. The office has to be vacant before you can take action in filling it. The council president will be the acting mayor as of midnight that day, and will be running the meeting, so it'll be the six of you. At that meeting, I've chosen that date to give maximum flexibility as far as options for how you go about filling the vacant office. You could make an appointment from any eligible elector from the City of Hudson. You could, you could schedule it to be filled at the spring election, the regular April election. And I've asked Nancy to have the paperwork ready to go. There's a deadline on Monday morning to get it in the paper to advertise if that were to be happening, so that it would go out and there'd be plenty of chance for candidates to circulate papers and play by the same rules that we're all used to, if that's what you decide to do. Further, if you do decide to do an appointment from among the, one of the council members, which I could foresee that possibly happening, because we have several qualified individuals, if that were happened, and the office was accepted before December first, then by law, that vacancy on the council would need to be filled at the spring election.
If it was one that wasn't already being filled?
If it was one that wasn't already being filled. If it was already being filled, then, you know, there's already an election coming for that, and you can do whatever you want for the interim period.
Correct. And that would happen at a meeting after that sometime?
I'm announcing this twenty days ahead of time, or three weeks ahead of time, essentially, to give you and the public a chance to think about this and to communicate you, to you what they think their preference would be. And I'll still be presiding at the meeting on the twenty-second, when we hopefully adopt our budget, and I'll be working with Council President Bernard on transition things, so that she's ready to take over until you do make up your mind what to do. If you chose to take some time to think about it, there could be a period of time in which she serves as acting mayor until you do decide to do something else. That's all I have. Any communications from any older person? It's a quiet room. City attorney?
No.
City administrator?
Just briefly, I'll report on the elections. We have forty, four thousand three hundred and seventy-six citizens vote, um, between in-person and absentee. That's about forty-nine percent of our registered voters. And I've got a memo on the desk. The individual districts range from forty-six percent to fifty-nine percent, so we had a very solid turnout for a, a off-presidential year.
Okay. We may be ready to adjourn.
I will so move.
Second.
In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. We're adjourned.